All set? Okay. All right, all right. Hello, thanks for your patience. We'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Conservation Commission on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Our first order of... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sue Gibbons, Acting Chair today for Karen McGregor, who cannot be with us.
I'm Katie Cass.
I'm Amy Keeler.
Carlos Salinas.
Okay. Our first order of business is to note that Item 2 on the agenda has been continued to November 18th, so we will not be discussing that. And the next one is for me to make a motion to move Item 4, which for the Block Island School, to the Item 2 place, so we can do that first.
Before you do so, Madam Chair, I would like to point something out about the Bayberry Hill CRMC files we received, just for the Commission to take under advisement. And that is that within the CRMC application, there is a final report of the Archaeological Reconnaissance Survey. I urge the Commission members to take a close look at it. It has five recommendations included in it. And I will be also reaching out to the Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission to try to understand their document from 2020.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'll go back to the motion to move Item 4 to the next item on the agenda. Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that takes us to Item 4, which is now Item 2. This is the Block Island School, Town of New Shoreham, Plat 10, Lot 1, to discuss and make comments on an application for a development plan review under Section 320 Public Education Zone for an outdoor classroom and accessory structure. There was a memorandum from Jennifer Brady, L U A O, regarding the application. Tom?
Good afternoon. Tom Resum here. This applicant, this application is placed by the town manager. I'm facilitating that as the facility manager. So you'll see, you'll see in your copies, it's signed by Amy and myself. But hopefully, we can get through this. The, in the development plan review process, which is for any special zone, that's the power company zone, the educational zone, the medical zone, blah, 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 everybody has to get an opportunity to look at it. So while there may not be anything specifically conservation-related, because you're on one of the groups that have to see this, we're going to go through this process. On the fifth page of your handout, if you've got one for this, it's a development plan review application, is a project narrative. Basically, it says that the school is going to remove some loom and put down a 12-by-20-foot concrete pad to the south of the second grade, which may only make sense to Susan, but it's basically between the building and the hedgerow and the dirt lot that's on Payne Road. And that is, they got a grant to put in this outdoor classroom. It'll, it'll have a sun shade, it'll have the concrete pad, it'll have a storage shed for miscellaneous furniture, and a privacy fence to the road. It's for the purpose of using the outdoors when they can. And that's it. It's basically just a concrete pad with a metal roof. And we hope you find no objections with that. But obviously, we are here.
All right, thank you. All right. So do we need a motion on this, Amanda? Or?
If you want to say no comment, if you want to say it's great, but...
Okay, so I guess I would make a motion to, to say that the Conservation Commission supports the development of the outdoor classroom at the Block Island School. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
All set, Amanda?
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right. So that backs us up to what was number three on here. That is Blansfield Realty Holdings LLC, Plat 3, Lot 136, to discuss and act upon Department of Environmental Management Offer of Water Office of Water Resources Notice of Application Number 22-0340 for Permission to Alter Freshwater Wetlands. The project is at Assessor's Plat 3, Lot 136, New Shoreham, application by Blansfield Realty Holdings LLC. Application dated October 1st, 2025. The notice period is 45 days to offer comments to the Department of Environmental Management, and the notice period ends November 17th at 4:00 p.m.
Just a small note, I'm sorry, before you start, the, your comments will be going to the town council, who will then be passing them on to the DEM for this application.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Hamza Chowdhury. I'm counsel for Blansfield Realities Holding. It's a pleasure to be here today. Here with me today, we also have Mr. Blansfield, a principal of Blansfield Realty. We have Mark Castenillos from Shirensia and Associates. And we also have Mr. Kevin Hoyt, who is the prospective buyer of this, if we get through this process and we're able to develop the property. So...
I wasn't sure I heard you, prospective buyer?
Perspective buyer of Lot 136. Thank you. So we apologize that we were not able to be with you when you last met. The boats prevented us from being here, but we were all watching online. And we wish we could participate, because we would have loved to engage with you, and we're happy to have this opportunity now to do so. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I'm just going to do a brief overview of the project. Mr. Blansfield is going to offer some comments about the project, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark to walk, walk you through the specifics. So essentially, our client owns Lot 136, right there. And essentially, this is printed exactly from the town's GIS website. Went online, so this is the official record from the town. That property is landlocked unless it is able to use the 40-foot right-of-way, which is platted. So this property is landlocked unless we are able to use the deeded right-of-way, that is 40 feet over 138. I will also note for this board that 131 is also landlocked without this access. And the intent of our application and the development of this driveway is to allow both 136 and 131 to access their lots. Otherwise, there's no way to access it. And I can say that definitively, because in the process of the last three years of this application, we have exhausted every other alternative in order to try to minimize the impact to wetlands. We have looked for other legal access, we've looked for other ways, we've had conversations, many conversations, my client has had direct conversations, and also I have had direct conversations with the owners of, with counsel for the owners of Lot 138, which are here today, and I believe represented by counsel. So this deeded 40-foot right-of-way, we're only seeking to develop 10 feet of that. That is the minimum that we can develop in order to provide access and legal access under the New Shoreham ordinances for 136 and 131. I would note that we've calculated the approximate... So this particular exhibit, we have actually made this specifically to address the questions that we heard from this council last time, because there was some question about where the wetland is, what's being disturbed, what's not. So we're going to walk you through it, and Mark's going to walk you through it. But essentially, there's only a small portion, this entire wetland area is approximately 86,000 square feet. We're proposing the road, and the road is approximately 1,200 square feet. So that's approximately only 1.5% impact to that wetland. I will note that the owners of 138 have already applied to DEM and have been granted access over this wetland and granted permission to modify that wetland for their driveway. Now, in the, and I think this is going to come out later, it certainly came out in front of the planning board, where we've had conversations with the owners of 138. We've explored, can we share your driveway and use that to essentially go down and connect that way? This is their driveway right here. Can we, can we have the road come through here, the driveway come through here? The answer was no. Can we share a portion of the driveway and then snake back into Lot, the right-of-way? And the answer was no. So we've really exhausted it. And what I would note is that while you'll see that only this portion of the road is in the wetland, here you have the C Series wetland, right? And technically, the 40-foot right-of-way goes straight through that C Series wetland. What we've done is, since we control 136, we have taken it upon ourselves to absolutely avoid that C Series wetland completely and take a jog around the C Series wetland and then come back into the 40-foot right-of-way. And in order to do so, we needed to negotiate that with the owners of Lot 131. And we did so successfully in order to do that, in order to specifically minimize our impacts to wetlands on there. Did you have a question?
Yeah, let me just ask a question. I see the jog, but I don't immediately see why that would require negotiation with the 131 lot owner for you to go around the wetland that's on 136.
Because they have rights to the platted, deeded right-of-way. So the deeded right-of-way benefits both the owners, my client, owners of 136, and also benefits 131. So if we were to...
Does the right-of-way go all the way through 136 to 131?
That is correct. Yep. So essentially, technically, in order to, what we're doing is, we're developing something that's outside of their deeded right-of-way. So we negotiated with them, and they agreed that we're going to modify it in order to ensure that we can avoid any wetland disturbance in that area. So where we control, unfortunately, we do not control this piece. We do have a 40-foot deeded right-of-way, as set forth in the town's own plat maps that I showed you earlier. Where we can avoid it, when we can control it, we can. We've had multiple negotiations. I have spoken with council many a time for Bates &amp; Conway, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to come to an agreement about how to access this without wetland minimization. So that is essentially the intro to the property, to the question. So what I'd like to do at this time, subject to your approval, Madam Chair, is have Mr. Blansfield come up and give his introductory remarks, and then turn it over to Mark from Shirensia to give you the details behind the specific design and the minimization that has been taken into effect.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question for counsel before he goes. I have a question for the gentleman before he goes. You mentioned that you exhausted all possibilities. What about Plat 134, which you jointly own?
Yep, so thank you for that. Thank you for that question. Same question came up in front of the planning board. So essentially, what we've done is, we explored the possibility of having a road come in from East Mansion Road to 136. Unfortunately, it's not physically possible, and I'll show you why. So here, you see that there is a septic, right? You have a sewer box and lines from this structure to this septic field. As a result, we would not be able to traverse that here. Similarly, we don't have enough space to safely pass here. What we would have to do is, we don't own this, this is 131. So there's no way for us to hug this line and go up there. The other thing that we need to take into account is safety. And we need to provide enough space for fire apparatus and fire trucks to access the property in case of an emergency. And based on the engineering of the site, that's one of the issues here. We don't have enough space in order to safely do so. Furthermore, even if we could, there's no deeded right-of-way over that piece of property. Here, we have a deeded right-of-way. It's right up against the house, right? They, they live there, right? So you can imagine having a driveway servicing two structures and 131, you know, multiple cars going by someone's bedroom window, which is less than ideal, and that, I believe that's putting it lightly. Furthermore, if you're going to try to propose these alternatives despite all of that, I am almost certain that the owners of 135 are going to have something to say about it, and they'll be here, you know, voicing those objections. I guarantee you that the owners of 133 will also have similar issues. So you're, again, there's no deeded right-of-way there, and physically, it's not possible to do so, but thank you for your question.
And why does 131 need to be also serviced by the road?
Because they don't have physical access. So this...
But what's Blansfield's interest in helping 131, given that 131 doesn't want to help Blansfield?
Well, why do you say that?
Well, you, you mentioned that 131 would not...
I, I was talking about 138.
Okay, but 131 is fine? But you mentioned that 131 also was going to be serviced by the road, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So why couldn't 131 allow you to cut through that little corner of 131 that it controls?
Because there's, there's no deeded right-of-way there. And we've, we've talked to the Vander Slaysons about, and Vander Slaysons own 131, so when I say Vander Slaysons, that's what I mean. We've, we've actually explored the possibility of even going through Minister's Lot, up through 131, and again, the answer was no. We can't do that. So we're all, this has been platted since 1961. This has been in existence since 1961. So, and this entire neighborhood was designed with this access in mind. So we're not asking for anything other than what is in the land evidence records and that, you know, my client is entitled to. What we're trying to do is to minimize any impact to wetland, and I believe we've done, as we'll talk about today, we've done everything in our power to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Blansfield?
Glad to be here. Nice to be amongst, you know, a lot of great people. Our family, as you probably know, have been here for quite a long period of time. We go back to the, to the 60s, when this was actually developed and making the subdivision that you see here, which on that original plat where that right-of-way was, was in, that we had quarter acre lots, you know, at that point in time, that was the zoning back then. So, so the people who have actually... This is a little better, okay? Because you can see, you can see a little bit on what the challenges are, relationship to the other options. So all of these, of these properties were built in 1956 or so, okay? And believe it or not, there's the original, except for this property here, which has been sold, originally purchased by, you know, Bates &amp; Conway to develop this, was all part of our family, okay? The builder was Nixon, and O'Connell was the, is the lawyer for Nixon. All of these people are still here, except for they knew all about my grandmother's house. So with that in mind, this was servicing the back lots in that area. Our lot, okay, which, you know, as you know, my mom and dad across the street, they built their house in 1990. They've been there successfully, you know, and enjoy that proximity to being here on Block Island for many, many summers, as you know, probably some of you recognize that of the rain and heavy. Anyway, so that lot was sold. We worked with Kevin to help to, to allow the septic to be, you know, sort of self-contained on that property, which developed a relationship that we still have today. And it comes down to the fact that the property behind us is not something we want to develop, sell, or try to improve. We really want to make that a possible sale to a local person, and Kevin was that person that we decided to do that. Utilizing no other, other options, which we've talked about this previously, the, the, this property here now, okay, which has very limited room, or a 10-foot wide road, would have to encompass the ability to disturb what is over here, okay? Also, it's almost impossible here without going on the other property and saying, you know, there's, you know, the Dodges and, and O'Combs, okay? Which you, which you are obviously not a fan of there. So we would have to have their approval for somebody that's not deeded. Same thing with the Nixons, also, same thing, you know what I'm saying? Because we would have to be coming within feet of their, where they park, which right now depends, just use the same area, which is all grass. So understanding that, you know, we're trying to do the most minimal, you know, sort of invasion to whatever we're allowed to, is why we chose this and tried to negotiate many options with the, the people who purchased this property from our family. And it's just to the fact right now that you got no other options unless you want to just see what would happen with these, when in fact, if we were to suppose that we would put a road there between here or here, would involve the neighbors not really understand, obviously agreeing with that. So we took the, the only way we knew, which is the deeded right-of-way. And I thank you for your time, and that's where I just gave you a little background. If you have any questions?
So, so my question right now does relate to the potential for a road between you and between the other Blansfield lot and Nixon, or on the other side, because maybe I can't envision it well enough. But when you say that it would require driving right by where they park, into, to put a, there is already a driveway there.
There's no driveway, it's just grass.
Right, but they're probably driving on the grass as they come in.
We would have to put a road in.
Right?
A road.
Sure.
So a road down becomes not grass, because everything right now is all grass. So we're talking about...
But, but this piece coming from 138, coming on the right-of-way, is also grass and wetland. So I guess I'm, I don't yet see why it's more negative to create a road between two houses than it is to create a road through wetland to access 136.
Because we're deeded this option, okay? That was, that's the, the legal aspect is that I have, we have no legal right to make this a road. We'd have to have the ability to get approvals from the neighbors, as well as also this commission, and you can imagine what that will do to a, I would call it a neighborhood. This is a neighborhood. We've been here for over 50 years together as, as, as family. As Mark, Mark would know, we've been around here. So we're all of a sudden saying, oh, now we're going to put a road between your house and ours, and then have your grandkids, our grandkids trying to actually try to deal with that while that's going on?
But you're putting a road through to one single-family home.
But that road was designed there to begin with when they bought that lot. That was, the only reason why we're talking about this now is that they're there, they got there first to do this, when they knew that this was here. They knew it all along that this was here. And they're saying, no, we don't need this, we can go all the other way. Well, you could imagine what that's going to do to a lot of different families than to do that when they knew that was there. So we're saying to you that we either have no accessway, or you're saying we have no accessway, when we really have been paying taxes for this right-of-way and for this property, for these two properties for, for, for years, years. And then all of a sudden, I was like, oh, we don't want it. Well, we're not saying that we, you should have known better, we, we gave them the information to show that that was deeded when they bought the property. And that's why we're saying to you, we're using what we know.
But above and beyond the objection from neighbors to that property...
Right.
You have the wetlands issue.
Understood.
Right. So...
And we understand that the wetlands are obviously, you know, we've done, Mark, as you know, we've done what we potentially have done, and we'll have Mark here to speak to that, to mitigate that as, 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 as limited as possible, knowing that it's, it's our only right to get there. And I don't, I will tell you right now, trying to, to put one or two roads in this section of here is, is almost impossible. This is actually, we have a common well that sits right here that services all these houses. This was access to get that well line to be able to be serviced by a common well that services all four houses. Still, to this day, it's the greatest well around. So you can imagine that, you know, trying to be utilized as a, you know, as to redo the well and get through this area, the wells right here.
And legally, the road has to be 10 feet wide, is that what you said?
Legally, 10 feet wide with some shoulder on either side.
Okay.
So it really, it's like driving by, you know, saying a bedroom window, it's two feet away with trucks all being there. If we, you know, if it wasn't for that, we would have said something, but it's just we're, this has been there for 60 years.
And so your intention is to build two homes back there?
I have no intention of building any home. What we're doing is trying to sell the property. I could have done that, and you know, but we, we are not into that.
But, but if you're saying there's no intention to build homes, on the plan, there's a single-family house, an accessory structure, and a second accessory structure.
Right. And, and, and Kevin will talk to that, because it's not that I am doing that, it's just that, that's with the interest to have an islander who could afford to be able to do this, live here on this island, and that was our intent, was to try to allow that to occur, because we know what it's like when, when lots across the street are selling for $2 million. So we're saying, here's a good opportunity, my parents would have endorsed this, and I'm saying I am too.
I just have one clarifying question, just real quick. And I think you've already said this, but I just want to make it super clear, you've talked to each of these plat owners on the right side here that are connected, you've...
We haven't.
You haven't.
But we will, okay? I'll tell you that right now, as soon as this is over, we're going to say, you know, here's what has been suggested as options, and you'll want to come and talk about that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Blansfield. I just wanted to point out, and, and thank you, Jim, for turning to this page, because it shows exactly what I was trying to say in better terms. Here, you've got, again, a septic tank, right? And infrastructure servicing this. So realistically, you don't have access physically here. So I just wanted to point that out. If I could have Mark come up and walk the board through the project, I appreciate that.
Hello, Mark Castellanos, Land Surveyor with Shirensia.
Mark, can you lift that mic so that it, it shows to you? This is very hard for me to hear.
Sure. Mark with Shirensia, the land surveyor. I'll talk through some of the design, which pretty much covers, I'll, I'll briefly go over it. So here's the platted 40-foot right-of-way that we're legally allowed to have. Now, I know this gets a little tough in the disturbance area, so what you haven't seen and what we've provided was an exhibit that zooms in on that portion.
Yeah, this.
Have you got, have you had a chance to look at that at all? Okay. So the green is the 40-foot right-of-way. So we have to stay within that area. We're not allowed, without permission from the, but we are not allowed to design outside of that. So that is our constraint on this end. Obviously, we're in the wetland in this portion, but we've taken the design northeast as far as we could, still allowing room to capture stormwater, to be managed with this catch basins and swell here, to then drain back into the wetland that naturally did prior to this proposed design. On the south, rather than grading in and filling this in for, for a road, they designed a retaining wall that will now act as the new buffer, along with additional planting so this will be allowed to revegetate up to the wall. The areas here, as I mentioned, are roughly about 1,200 feet of, of area that we're asking to be disturbed to fit this design. Additionally, the strata will be all fresh stone, it will be allowed to, water will be able to permeate through there. All underground utilities as well will be underground. All underground utilities as well will be underground, no overhead lines crossing the wetland that will need maintenance or any cutting of vegetation to maintain. So we've really done everything we do to say, look, we're trying our best to stay out of here, but we're limited here in the north by this, and we've taken everything as far north as we can to preserve the wetland, and that's good.
How tall is the retaining wall?
It's going to probably be very. See the height was designed. And you know what we call Sergio designing the height? It says approximately four and a half. I think it's approximately four and a half feet, I believe, above the, the finish grade.
And that would be on the east side of the road.
Um, yeah, it's south and west, I think.
No, it's the west.
West.
Yeah. West side of the.
Yeah, west side of the road, away from the beach.
Yeah, represented by that.
Got you, okay, right.
So you see, the word of the forty-foot right of way, we have everything more than halfway over to keep it, to limit the impact on the wetland.
And so does that just naturally drain the, the existing wetlands? They'll just be.
Yeah, there's not much grain here, but you can see that the, the grain is, is higher here, so naturally.
It will flow.
Flow here, and that's why these, this was designed to, to capture that water here and allow it to to be re-invaded to the weapon.
The retaining wall will have holes in it, or?
Yes, the retaining wall, I think, is designed for, well, not, not so much for, also for, for critters and stuff, for, for frogs and whatever to, you know, trappers that will not have that vivid wildlife.
And that's PBC that you use?
That in here, um, I believe so.
Yeah, there must be just a, in one of the pipes underneath. So when you're talking about drainage from, the retaining wall is supporting the road. So the road is going to drain down, downgrade through that retaining wall and into the rest of the wetland. So that would be one of my questions is, has there been a wildlife biologist study on that wetland to know that? Because once you start using that driveway as a road, you know, there's putting in the road and the impact that it has on the wetland, and then you have once the road is in use by vehicles.
Yeah.
And a secondary impact or, you know, a, a long-term impact potentially on the wetland, has, has that been studied?
Yes, so the, the, well, we have the, the wetlands narrative that talks about the design, and he collaborated with us in the design as far as the species.
I can, I can help with that question, Madam Chair. Um, if, so in front of you is a report by Avizinus Environmental. So it essentially talks about on page eleven, wildlife in wildlife habitat. And essentially it talks about in BB, wildlife indicators, few wildlife indicators were observed, however, open water does uh, provide lentic habitat for fish, frogs, turtle, uh, herbiles, and wading birds. And the proposed impacts are in DD. Uh, it is anticipated that there will be direct impacts, uh, in the fifty-foot, this will stem from the construction. Uh, and essentially, I believe the conclusion is that it's going to be a de minimis, um, impact.
Um, if I may add, same report points out that the, uh, evaluation was, uh, performed on May twelfth, twenty twenty-one between the hours of ten AM and three PM. And the report further states, this is obviously not an ideal time to directly observe wildlife.
I, I believe that is, is inaccurate, where is that exactly in the report?
On page ten, it's the beginning of the evaluation methodology.
Okay, thank you. But to take it into account, that we, we acknowledge that there will be some impact. Um, but we, uh, believe we have taken the necessary steps and Kevin will be able to speak to exactly, um, you know, what steps have been taken to mitigate. It, on that note, if you want to turn, if you could, uh, to page five. This report speaks about, um, all the avoidance, minimization, and mitigation efforts that are outlined in this report and that have been taken into consideration when designing it. And there's six points here that I'll just quickly run through. Uh, the first is the access to the law is achievable only via the deeded, uh, right of way. And, uh, less impactful options for the sighting have been exhausted during the planning process. The area disturbed by the proposed driveway has been reduced as far as possible to the narrowest dimension allowed. Um, and, uh, essentially trying to minimize disturbance footprint. Three, the proposed driveway will be constructed of pervious material and culverts are proposed to allow pre-project water movement. Uh, four is plantings are proposed for the entirety of the disturbed area except for the driveway surface itself. Five, uh, on the subject lot, the proposed driveway is routed around a small isolated wetland that we talked about with the C series. So essentially, we're completely avoiding any disturbance to the C series wetland. And then finally, on, uh, number six, power infrastructure is proposed to be buried to mitigate the need for overstory clearing. Furthermore, uh, the, all the minimization efforts, um, are detailed, um, on, uh, page nine. And specifically, it's under the section mitigation, and those are items one through eight there. Um, essentially, um, all restorative activities shall be overseen by qualified wetland professional. Erosion control shall be installed along the downslope margin of the proposed driveway and continually monitored for efficacy. Um, all wetland areas temporarily impacted by the construction shall be seeded with New England wetland plat, plants, specifically wetland seed mix. Five, uh, bald and burlapped or transplanted shrub species shall be planted in an interspersed fashion, eight feet on center, three feet tall after planting. Throughout the depicted area, similarly, trees shall be planted eight feet on center. Six, species planted within the perimeter wetland shall consist of white spruce. Uh, seven, the area within the wetland area shall be planted in a similar fashion with inkberry. And then finally, eight, the area shall be left to re- revegetate naturally and return to a wild state. A monitoring report shall be prepared by the qualified professional and be submitted to DEM. A second monitoring report shall be prepared one year later to ensure complete restoration of the buffer zone. Any plants that do not survive the first year shall be replaced at this time. So we've taken painstaking efforts to do everything within our power to try to, number one, avoid this altogether, and that didn't work. Number two, to minimize the, uh, the portion of the impacted wetland. And three, provide mitigation, um, as I've just outlined, um, here. I'll also note that, um, these documents have been provided to, uh, DEM. We have hired, uh, Blansfield Realty has hired a title expert uh, by the name of Chris Maltebano at Pilgrim Title. Um, and he's essentially issued, uh, a legal opinion that this right of way is the only way in. So again, we have explored every option. And unfortunately, this is the only way, but it's a deeded right of way. It's been there since nineteen sixty-one. And all we're asking is the ability to have access to one thirty-six, which is otherwise landlocked, and one thirty-one, which also has rights to this deeded right of way, otherwise would be landlocked. So when we're talking about, you know, trying to mitigate, I know that one thirty-one is, is monitoring this as well. One thirty-one is represented by Joe Priestley, as, as everyone up here knows. So, uh, he and I have been working together, he and I worked together in order to, uh, have that jog around that C series. Uh, he planned, he, he is also helping, uh, with this to develop one thirty-one as well. So when we're talking about alternatives, um, if there's only an alternative, which we, we submit that there are no alternatives, even if there is an alternative, you're going to have one thirty-one back right here, asking to develop this exact same road again. Because they don't have any legal access other than this forty-foot right of way. So we're not only talking about one lot, we're talking about two lots that are otherwise useless to their owners and cannot serve the population here, as Mr. Blansfield stated. What we're trying to do is meet the goals of the comprehensive plan in order to perform, uh, to provide, uh, affordable housing and attainable housing on the island. And, and that's exactly what is going on here. And my client could sell this for a pretty penny, and they're taking a discount, a huge discount on this to, to send, to essentially allow this to be owned possibly, if this goes all through, to somebody, um, who serves this, this community on the island. So with that in mind, unless you have any questions, I'd like to ask Kevin, uh, to come up and he can speak to that.
I do have questions.
Yes, of course.
So the mitigation measures are really after the fact. Um, you know, it's about the, the planting that will be done.
Of course.
I don't see anything about the, um, erosion and sedimentation controls during construction. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, so that's number three. Um, erosion control shall be installed along downslope margin and proposed.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, that's, that's also after the fact.
Yep.
So during the construction, you know, to build a road, build anything, there's going to be a lot of disturbance.
Yep.
So what, what are the measures that are going to be taken during that?
So why don't you address that? So, uh, I'll come at this wearing two hats, now how's everybody doing today? Well, I think most everybody knows me, my name's Kevin Voight. Um, so not only do I come at this from, as a prospective buyer, but I also come at this as an individual that holds three licenses from DEM as design, for design work and environmental mitigation and, uh, in the, uh, excuse me, environmental, the, um, everything we've done on the plan is mitigative, very much to your point, there are post or pre-construction standards that we will have to meet with DEM, DEM has reviewed this, to our knowledge, they are in agreement with it. Um, that is, in effect, the, um, uh, built, uh, filter trap, salt socks, the detail that you see right here, um, that will essentially be on the downhill side, and that is shown actually by everywhere, anywhere where you see this SW line, that stands for straw wall. So we will use, rather than using the plastic silk fence that always blows apart and ends up all over every neighborhood, we'll be using a kind of best management, um, soil erosion control. Certainly would be my intent to make sure that as we begin excavation work for the road, that all of the stockpiled materials would be managed properly, that will be part of town requirements in a building. So at some point, to address your concerns, overall, beyond just this portion, there will be a larger soil erosion and sediment control plan for the, the development. Just to kind of stay on the technical aspects of it, everything we could possibly do, I want to make sure there's some clarity here because I know from my time on the boards, um, back in two thousand and six through two thousand and eight, when I sat as vice chair of the planning board, retaining walls was a scary word. Um, this is a, this retaining wall will be a native stone retaining wall. It will include the design concepts discussed between myself, Sergio Serenzia, Ed Avizinus, Mark Castellanos, will include critter crossings. Um, I would like this to be an example of how we can do this so that we don't, don't end up with roads being plowed through wetlands on Block Island, which is what historically we've been used to. Um, I, you all know me and understand that essentially environment, I spent twenty-five years of my life dedicated to environmental science. I've talked about my professional licenses, I've been published in the, the realm of environmental science three times at a global level, in a globally circulated publication. Um, this is my heart, and I have every intention of putting my heart into making sure that every bit of, um, this wetland is protected. So on the, with regards to stormwater runoff, so we have addressed the issue of soil erosion and sediment control uh, with regards to stormwater runoff around the, around the road. Um, we, the roadway has been designed according to DEM best, uh, management standards with a pervious surface. So there is essentially, in the void space of the gravel, there is essentially volume for a one-inch rainstorm. That is DEM standards at the time. Um, on the uphill side of the road, and, and to, please understand that this road is designed in a way, and it's tough to see because we're talking about inches here across ten feet. The road is tipped somewhat to the uphill side, not the downhill side, not to go directly into the weather. We don't, that's, that's poor practice, what it's done is tipped essentially to the uphill side so that essentially on this side, within easement, all within easement, we have essentially these small residential catch basins that can be serviced very easily by one individual without the need for specialized equipment. The idea here is keep it simple and be able to maintain this so that essentially we can keep sedimentation of, the sedimentation into the wetlands to a minimum. You know, on either side of these residential catch basins, there is effective treatment area by Rhode Island D and standards, special well standards. We have essentially an earthquake swell constructed there, so the stormwater alone can be caught by the earth and swell and essentially effectively treated in the soil and by, as it runs across the greater swell to these catch bases. That's all inherent to the design of the roadway. And I think that those were the issues that we, that the, the board asked on, is there any other questions on the technical aspects of the design?
I have one, one other, um, I noticed that in the plans, there's, uh, just two culverts. Do you think that's enough to permit water flow and critter flow?
So to be, um, we did do hydraulic, like up, upslope calculations, considering that some portion of this area uphill of the slope will be, this is all vegetated, so that will be, that, that vegetation, and actually all of this uphill of the slope is all vegetated. So you can actually see this little hooked line here is the edge of vegetation. So really, we have no stormwater runoff if, if, if there is minimal flow across the landscape. The only area is where, you know, we may have runoff is where the owners of lot one thirty-eight have cleared. Um, and essentially, which impacts the, you know, we had, uh, obviously had no control over that, of that work. So, and that, um, clearing was within the perimeter of wetland. So, um, what we've tried to do here is certainly calculate that and the two twelve-inch catch basins, um, with the, excuse me, the two residential catch basins, two-by-two catch basins, they're, they're small. And the twelve-inch pipes that, that lead from them, from those structures to the wetland are sufficient sized. That was reviewed and, and by Sergio Serenzia as professional engineer.
Will be retaining wall, how, how far does the retaining wall go? Does it go to the?
Uh, actually, so I, uh, as very much having input into this, um, the end of the retaining wall is actually where you see it. I, I actually looked at that, essentially, when do we actually have to stop the retaining wall? So that we don't have that impact to wildlife process. I kind of, from my history on Block Island, I see kind of stone walls as like a, um, critter highway. They often use the cracks and crevices within the walls to migrate, and so.
Will it be a drywall?
It will, yeah, yes, that was, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, that, yes, this will be a draw, this is not going to be a concrete wall. This will be a, I, I did mention this, this will be a Block Island stone wall, yes, without a doubt, that is, um, native stone wall here from, yeah, yes. So, um, and it will be, as Mark said, it'll be about, at its highest point, it'll be about four and a half feet on the downhill side, but not more than what we typically see along our roadways, you know, on the uphill side of it from the road.
I, I wonder what's going to happen to this small wetland here. I, this is becoming the new norm on Block Island, is asking for a right of way through wetlands, and we just keep separating wetlands, and I don't know if this has anything to do with this.
I can, I can address that if I can.
It won't anymore.
So we have to look at this from the perspective of hydrology. And hydrology isn't measured in a decade or two, hydrology is measured in over centuries. And so this entire wetland has been anthropogenically altered. It was cleared, the, the nineteen thirty-nine aerial imagery is clear, it was cleared right down to the pond that exists here. Uh, you can clearly see that this area, all of this has revegetated over time. So really, this is not like a pristine native, and I believe Ed would support me on that. He and I discussed these term, these matters at length. He and I discussed these matters at length when we're, as we're talking about this. So this C Series wetland, all right, now I'm gonna get into Block Island history and hopefully don't get thrown at me from behind the, but there's used to be, in this area of the C Series wetland, there's what they used to call Poplar Cottage. And it was, Poplar Cottage. There are pictures of it, on George Mott's Facebook page, there are pictures of it. Ed and I, there are remnants of the foundation. Along this C Series edge, there are remnants of the foundation of Poplar Cottage. Ed and I, from our background in soil science and wetland ecology, believe that this, that building, my understanding, is burned down probably in the late forties or fifties. The foundation was left. This depression that was left over is remnants of Poplar Cottage. And you can see Poplar Cottage on the nineteen thirty-nine aerial imagery. And it ties to this, you know, there is spatial shift in the maps and the aerial imagery, so it's not exact, but that, that Poplar Cottage is in the area of the C Series wetland. And again, there are rocks, stones, boulders, bricks, and mortar, right in this area.
So it's burnout?
What's that?
It's burnout?
No, it's not, it's essentially, there's no standing water in that. My understanding is, there's no, there's no standing water in that ever. Nope. So this here is completely in the, essentially in the vegetation behind the Blansfields property. So, and I do believe that this is, Ed and I do believe that this is associated with the depression that was the foundation for Poplar Cottage. There was also a sheet, a barn down farther in this area over here that I've also found the foundation for. So again, my point in all of that is that this is the second time that this property's been developed. It was developed, you know, this is not pristine native land. This is, there was essentially a home on this property going back, you know, seventy years ago.
Okay.
Okeydoke. So one of the things that I worked on at length when I was on the planning board was a revision to the comprehensive plan. And in that, Margie, myself, Jen, we worked very hard on the idea of attainable housing. That's, and that, the idea of that is somewhere in between affordable, subsidized by state, local, federal, and some ability of someone that might not meet the criteria of low mod housing at maybe a hundred and twenty, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit of a geek at this because I've been the benefit of affordable housing on Block Island, you know, back in 2008 when I, before I got divorced. So the there are individuals, and the town is working on this, that essentially won't qualify for low mod housing because they're at a hundred and twenty percent of median or more. And so there's this bridge, we need something to bridge the gap because I can't afford a two million dollar home, you know, that's been constructed. The Blansfields, Jim and I began talking about this back in, I mean, I've worked for the Blansfield family going back to 2012. And Jim and I and his brother David and his sister Jane have been talking about this for five years now. This is, it's been a long journey. And the, what this works out to be is what is in the comprehensive plan now is in the town's approved comprehensive plan is attainable housing. That marriage between when someone might want to provide a piece of property that's undeveloped to someone on the island and essentially sell it for, you know, below market. And that's what the Blansfield families are doing. And there will be restrictions on this for ten years concerning, so that I can't essentially develop and flip it. Another, a member of the planning board brought that up and I can, all I can do is answer this, this way. I just buried my mother on Block Island. My grandparents, my aunts and uncles are buried on Block Island. My family's been here since nineteen oh three. I'm not going. I will be here and my heirs will be here most likely. This property, and I want to be able to enjoy the neighborhood that has really been a pleasure to be a part of since I, you know, I've gotten to know the Prendergasts, the Nixons, the O'Connell's. And I look forward to being part of that community because it's hard these days on Block Island to find a place where it's not pulling and tugging with your, with your neighbors. So.
Kevin, I'm sorry, when you say restrictions for ten years, that would be, that's on further development on the same piece that you're?
Mostly, it will revolve around sale of the property so that essentially I can't just sell to the, like sell to somebody else. There will be caveats in place and that's all, and stuff that is, this is step one. We gotta get through this first and step two is essentially drafting up and spending time and the expenses on the, it's not gonna be affordability.
Right.
It'll be about resale within ten years. So that essentially I can't turn around and do exactly what Jim's family doesn't want to do, which is sell for profit.
But that agreement will be between you and the Blansfields as opposed to, that's not a legally defensible agreement in, on a town level?
The, it will.
Private agreement, and I'm not saying it's not a good agreement. I'm just thinking about the legality of it.
I think that there, I think one of the things is, and I'll let Hamza address this more, but from my perspective, it would be an agreement between, an agreement between owners.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm happy to answer any further questions. But if there are no further questions, I'm happy to sit down and let others speak and then possibly rebut.
I just have one final, just kind of an overall, because looking at all the mitigation stuff, the one thing you guys have stressed is that you've explored and exhausted all other options besides this proposed driveway. I just am curious if you have the information as to when you, the date you contacted about that, using that initial driveway and their reasoning and if they were made a?
So, you know, they're here today and they can certainly speak to it if they, if they so choose, but that was prior to 2022. Am I correct on that? So essentially, there were conversations between the client and I believe Kevin was involved in those conversations and, you know, the owners of 138. And the proposal was, can we share the driveway all the way down? Can we share parts of the driveway? Because that would avoid this whole thing. I will tell you that I have worked very hard with the owners of Lot 138's council, multiple, multiple, multiple conversations, emails, to try to hammer out some way to come to an agreement that we don't have to impact the wetland at all. And unfortunately, those conversations have not been fruitful. I cautiously, I'm an optimist, so I'm not saying no. Maybe things will change, right? But as of now, this is what we are required to do because it's the D to right of way and we've exhausted all other options at this point. But thank you so much for your question. I don't think we offered the money, no.
My understanding also is that the plot owners on the East Mansion Road have not all, I understand your points about not breaking up certain properties and how uncomfortable it would be for those property owners, but have each, these, each of these property owners has not yet been contacted?
That is correct, yeah. And candidly, they're gonna be contacted shortly about this given comments from the planning board and, you know, obviously exploration here so that their voices can also be heard throughout this process because notice is just a basic tenet by, we all live by that. So they should have their due process and their ability to be heard on that as well. So thank you again for that comment.
Thank you. So maybe it's, I don't want to get caught in the legal nature of it because it sounds like the 138 lot owners have legal counsel here also, but is it possible for you to talk about your objection to use of the driveway at this meeting?
I think, I believe they're going to. No, they're going to, they did it at the planning board.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to go sit down if there are no other further questions, but I'm happy to come back up to. All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Good afternoon, my name is Christopher DeVideo. I represent Kelly Conway, Peter Bates, the owner of Lot 138.
Okay, thank you.
Where, and the wetland impact is going to occur is on their property. That's, we're not the applicant, but the impact is on my client's property. So I want to begin with the overarching sort of regulatory scheme, which is no secret, it's all about protecting natural resources. So you have the Rhode Island DEM, which is, has a plenary authority, if you will, to issue a permit when you're altering a wetland. First, avoid impacts. If you cannot, this is DEM standards, minimize those impacts. But in that context of avoiding and minimizing, it requires the applicant to put forth to DEM all feasible alternatives. And I'll get to that definition in a moment. We get to the town regulatory scheme. You have the land development regulations, which equally look towards preserving natural resources and mitigating damage to natural resources, including obviously wetlands. You have your zoning ordinance, which also mirrors and bolsters that position, minimizing and avoiding impacts to natural resources. You have your comprehensive plan. Which also focuses on just housing, but also protecting the ecosystem, one of the most cherished things that Block Island has, part of the, part of its comprehensive plan. And of course, let's not forget the Conservation Commission. You're created by charter, by the zoning code. Your sole purpose function, your marching charge is to preserve natural resources. Yeah? Okay. So in the overarching regulatory, state and local, the objective is to avoid impacts to resources. Is part of that process is looking at alternatives. Now, I want to make it very clear, there's been, this, this, there's been a discussion, a presentation, not just tonight, but today's, but in the last presentation, there's no other legally rights of way to 136. Well, maybe there's not. And I don't want to bore you because we have title opinions which say there are other legal rights of way to 136 and to 131. But that's not what we're here for. We're looking at are there other feasible alternatives? Now, when we look at the feasible alternatives, is it land that you own or that land that you could get an interest in? I mean, you could buy someone's right to pass through their property for your project. Now. And with respect to the impacts, I think that, but you brought up these questions about wildlife corridors and stuff like that. And I think that they're very genuine. The prospective buyer, Mr. Blansfield and Surenzia, and, excuse me, their consultants, they don't want to do harm or they wanted to minimize their harm. And intuitively, I think you probably understand that the best laid plans of men and mice often go awry. Now, hopefully you understand that, but just give me just a bit of perspective because I know that the prospective buyer talked about his background. So I have a degree in natural resource development from the University of Rhode Island. I then went on to be a wildlife biologist. I then went on to be a soil scientist and designing septic systems. And then before becoming an attorney, I worked at DEM as an environmental scientist reviewing and permitting septic systems for Block Island, doing soil tests. So I'm, I represent developers. I represent people who've gotten in trouble because they haven't, they failed to comply with their permit conditions. So as genuine, sincere as I think they are, things can go wrong. That's why there are impacts that are unavoidable. You can try to minimize them, but you need to look at alternatives. So let's look at the alternatives. I think it's important. If you look at your paper, see one, which is that large sheet you've got there? You've got a line here, twenty-one point seven, you see it there? Right there next to the garage, that's what's on paper, twenty-one point seven. If you were to travel like that, twenty-five seven, okay? It's at least twenty feet from here to here. It's at least twenty feet from here to here. So on the north side of 134, land owned by Blansford, there's the opportunity to put in a driveway. It goes from East Mansion Road, across the top and end, or across the bottom of the hall. The one across the bottom would also serve that dual purpose of giving access to 131. Now, their engineer's not here. They claim that it's not feasible, but the land development regulations require you have a twenty foot right of way, a ten foot traveled way in clearance on vegetation on either side, I think about two feet, so a total of fourteen feet. But the actual traveled way that you're driving on, excuse me, only has to be ten feet. I have not seen that alternative. Now, is there, arguably, we can criticize, is there a legal right of way here? Or north or south or one quarter? No. Well, for argument's sake, there's no legal right of way existing either side, north or south of 134. But could there be? Yeah, Blansford could grant an easement for a driveway, a road, sure. Now, by the way, feasible, what does that mean by DEM's terms? Feasible means that is engineerially and professionally sound and can be done. Convenience, and I do appreciate the fact that you're gonna have a driveway going by your house, but convenience and cost are not a substitute to damage environmental resources. That's why all alternatives need to be put forth. They haven't put that forth, they keep saying, there's no legal way to get in there. Well, there is because Blansford can convey a right of way to 131, across 134. Now, just one point, you can go into the, I went and looked at, map seven. Back in sixty-one, when this whole area was subdivided, I think by the Blansfields. You see this little jog right here? It shows on that plot, that map seven, go and look at yourself, right back in the land evidence records. There was a forty foot right of way to allow access to 131. Look at yourself, map seven, I just took that out of my cell, I got a picture in my pocket, my phone. There was, that's why it's odd shaped, curvy, because it was a forty foot right of way intended for people to access 131 from East Mansion Road. Likewise, this, and by the way, the septic system up here, that they're saying, oh, we can't disturb that? Yes, you can, because I permitted it. You can put in, I don't know what you call it, but it's called a septic system at age twenty, could be, and you could upgrade the pipe going from the septic tank to the leach field, shield it with concrete, a whole bunch of ways we should do it. During construction, when you've got heavy equipment in there, you can put load bearing plates down. So north of 134, there is a corridor that could provide a ten foot traveled way, improving. That's what they're putting here, ten feet. That's what they're proposing it through the wetlands, ten feet. That's all that you need. Now, of course, you need to make sure. They're gonna say, no, Steve, but I was out there, this is all weird. There might be some plants, but it's not like over here. The mist is thick, it's all on, like, see? So this notion or concept of, I do have to apologize because technically I'm pitch hitting, because I was not part of that, those prior communications on behalf of my client. And I know that there were, there were discussions in the past, but there's this idea, well, why not have them utilize the Bailey Conway's driveway pass right in between their homes and access this? I guess you'd have to do some other job, something, you have to move this house in order to access them. That's fine, maybe, maybe that's an, maybe that's an alternative. But guess what? It's not your job to figure out, well, is it even, is it possible or not possible? It's the applicant's job. The applicant needs to put forth those alternatives. Not, well, there's no other legal road rights of way, no, what other alternatives exist? I think common sense, if you're just sitting around saying, hey, wait a minute, maybe there is. Maybe there's an alternative that does come through 138. Maybe there's one that comes through 134. That's their job, they need to present it. All you're being asked is that, is this application meet your standards of exhausting all options of impacting a wetland? You made that recommendation to the town. You made that recommendation to the town. Hey, maybe your recommendation is, I think they need to sharpen their pencils and show us that a driveway on either side of 134 is not feasible. It may be inconvenient. I know it's not going to be more expensive. This, this proposed thing is going to cost a pretty penny. Putting a driveway across a lawn, not going to cost nearly as much, even including updating the septic tank. So that's your charge, right? Is this going to impact the environment? Of course it is. There's no way of getting around it. Except if you look at an alternate route in. Thank you.
I have a question for counsel. So I, I appreciate you're reminding us of what our charge is or isn't. But you know, your counterpart pointed out that there was a, you know, they, they did explore the possibility of having a, a driveway used part of your client's driveway, but it was rejected. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
So I was in counsel at that time and this is not necessarily about whether or not my client is being obstinate or resisting this whole thing. It's their job to present to DEM their alternatives. For example, there's the O'Donnells. And the O'Donnells, I think it's the O'Donnell's property, which is south of 136, 134, excuse me, the O'Donnell's property.
Yeah. So.
Right. Going in between those two properties, utilizing part of the, the O'Donnell property? I think it was mentioned, did he offer money? Just because you don't control the property today does not mean that part of your alternate alternatives analysis is offering money. Whether or not my client are willing to accept that or not. Again, it's the applicant's job to demonstrate, here are the alternatives. Here's the pros and cons of these alternatives. Forget about whether or not there's a legal right of way. We're going to debate that in court if necessary. A judge will decide whether or not there's a legal right of way. But I think right now, what we're trying to do is get this property's, this, these folks, the applicants, the ability to develop their property, but doing it in the most environmentally sound manner. Propose your alternatives. Reach out, document today, 2025, we offered X amount of money to them. We offered X amount of money to the O'Donnells. Be current. About things you've done in the past, show us some plans. Again, the engineer's not here, the surveyor is here, but the engineer can sharpen his pencil and show that. So to answer your question, I don't know yet. This, to my knowledge, just come to my attention, this idea of building a road bifurcating my client's compound.
Would y'all be comfortable at all in discussing that? Just sort of enlighten us so we can understand the back history? If you, please, if you could come to the mic.
You can use that one.
Yeah, either one. Just want to get, I just want to understand the background a little more. I appreciate y'all being here as well.
Hi, Peter Bates.
Kelly Conway.
Hello.
Owners of 138. Yeah, so the, can you ask the question again, please?
If we were, we were told that when they were looking at the alternatives, as you know, just to, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, my just summarizing, it seems that the, the, the project at hand, the, the claim is that this is the only possible way. And in their exposition, they said they had approached y'all to see if they could come out of your existing driveway and thus avoid the wetlands. And they, they, they made the statement that y'all said no. And I would, I'd just like to understand a little bit your thinking about that, please.
I'll take it, you can chime in, all right? Yeah, so I think the conversation was three or four years ago, maybe by phone. And we brought it to our counsel, who's someone other than Chris. And they said, we, we hired a couple of people to do title searches on the various properties. And they said, absolutely no. They, they have, they indeed have more than one access to lot 136. So so with that in mind, we declined the offer. And there wasn't really an offer. There wasn't a financial offer.
Thank you. So that's, that was four years ago?
Three or four.
Okay. And is there any, any thought that y'all might have that would change your mind about that or?
We want to preserve the wetlands as well. And we have, we believe that there is alternative access, legal alternative access.
We've heard from multiple parties.
And so, and in addition to that, the Blansfields do have the option to create access themselves. So I'm, I'm not inclined to say yes. I mean, I guess I wouldn't say never, but with that in mind, that they have alternative access, we'd like to preserve the wetlands as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe if I can be so bold, then maybe part of your suggestion to the town and DEM is to ask them, or even more than ask them, to research those other access points to 136.
Demanded of them, right? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Yeah. You know, I'm consistent with the, the planning board. We can send to, well, maybe we just send it through Jen, and you can get it through Jen. We had promised her to send her the map seven, which shows the 1961 subdivision and the rights of ways and roads and what was contemplated by the parties back then. As well as, which we've already submitted to DEM, but we'll submit, and I believe my brother's going to submit the same, our title report. You know, it might make you go dizzy because it makes me go dizzy and I'm into titles. But at least you'll have whatever information is available. So we'll send it to Jen as we promised, but ask her to forward it to you, y'all.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to respond to a couple of points that my brother had made. We, this, we've been at this for three to four years at this point. If you look at the original date on the DEM application. So within those three to four years, we have really kicked the tires on this. We've explored every alternative. And part of what I will submit to Jen and then to this board as well, in the same breath, are the legal opinions that we obtained in order to prove that there is no other legal access to this property. So we've been having this battle back and forth the last couple of years at this point. And we have conclusively proven through that expert opinion that there's nothing there. So I would note respectfully to my brother, he says there's alternative access, his client says there's alternative access, but there's nothing in the record. They're not handing you a report saying there's alternative access. And there's a reason, because there's not, because we have disproven every alternative that they have put up.
Well, I'm sorry, but the only thing I would say to that, I, I don't think anybody's questioning the fact that there's a legal right of way that runs in from Mansion Road over there. The problem, from my perspective, from Conservation Commission, is that the legal right of way runs through the wetlands and requires wetlands degradation to build the road and then use the road. If it didn't, I, I think you wouldn't have so much of an issue on your hands. But at this meeting today, when we've requested information about why it's not possible to come through any of the other lots, including the Blansfield lot that's owned by the same family, the only answers I'm hearing right now are that it's inconvenient and the neighbors won't like it, but that they haven't been approached on it. I know that area quite well. Actually, I spend a lot of time on Mansion Road. And there's a lot of car action in and out between those four homes in the summer all the time. I, you know, I, I know that it's not my decision to make as a, as a landowner through there. And, and I also want to say, I certainly have no, nothing but admiration for the fact that you might want to sell a piece of property at a slightly lower price to somebody who's going to be local because these are, you know, the only reason I live on Block Island is because of clever grandparents in the 1940s. So I recognize that we are privileged to live on the backs of people who managed to be here before it was this expensive. But I'm not, I'm not hearing personally that all of these, I'm hearing that these are not preferred alternatives and that there was concern about how it impacts the neighborhood. But I'm not hearing any direct opinions or direct information from those homeowners, including the Blansfields at that house, about why a 10-foot road couldn't fit through a 20-foot space in order to access lot 136.
So thank you for that comment. First, we, and I'm just, I'm stating that we've already been through, but I'll, I'll do it again. That we have a deeded right of way that's existed since 1960. We have a deeded right of way to access lot 136 and lot 131 since 1961. So there's that, number one. Number two, those owners have not been approached because we're developing something that we have the right to. It's in, it's in the land evidence records. So certainly, and I've said this at the beginning of the meeting, we will be approaching the owners of those lots. And I can almost guarantee you, their answer is going to be absolutely not. Because of the impact it's going to have to their properties. And there's no access there right now. So all we're seeking to do humbly is to develop what's been granted to us legally in the past. And I understand you're trying to explore all alternatives. I appreciate that. You know, it, it's, it's interesting because I, I was, I was not aware of this until a couple of minutes ago. You know, current owners of 138, you know, used to own this property. 135. And essentially, they had the opportunity to do the exact same thing that they're asking of us. They could have granted a right of way through that property to 138, which would not have impacted this wetland. They sold the property, they developed their property, they altered the wetland. So with respect, it's a little hypocritical to come to us, say, let's, let's go through your property when they had the opportunity to do so. And they said, no, we're not doing that. And they were granted the ability to do so without any objection or any issues.
Counsel, I completely understand your passion, but I don't think the forum is a good forum to cast dispersion. And I think it's important that we keep it that way.
Of course.
I think it's perfectly legitimate to point out inconsistencies, but I, I think we should refrain from.
Thank you for that point. But yeah, I, I would like to point out that inconsistency.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. So go ahead.
I would also like to state that an almost guarantee that those homeowners are not willing to sign off on a road that would come in between their property is not a guarantee. And therefore, it doesn't sound to me, as you've been, you've been using the same language, explored and exhausted. And it doesn't seem exhausted to me if you haven't talked to those people yet. And I understand you're going to. But to me, that seems, the exhausted part seems untrue to me, that that hasn't been fully explored.
Yeah, when I refer to exhausted, and I appreciate the question, I am talking about legal rights of way. So when we're, when we're looking at the possibility, we have to look at what's legal. And essentially, we looked at and we had an expert in, from Pilgrim Title, take a look at this and say, do we have access any other way? And the answer was, no, you do not. So with respect to exhausted, it was with respect to that piece. It wasn't, you know, approaching other people and asking for access, but I appreciate your point.
Respectfully, I just, I want to go back to what I, what I, what my head is coming down to is the fact that it's possible that this legal right of way, which is there, is the only access point to lot 136. And if it is, then your application through DEM will likely be approved. So I think we might be overplaying that piece of the issue here right now. I think as Conservation Commission, however, we need to remember exactly what our mission is, which is right here on the paper, that we promote and develop the natural resources, protect its watersheds and protect its natural, natural aesthetic areas. So for, in my mind, without 100% proof that there is no other legal way to access this lot that can be developed, and I just don't think that you're there yet because you've admitted that you haven't even spoken to the neighbors. That until you have that, I, I feel, and my fellow commissioners may not agree, but I feel that we're premature in agreeing that this is the only way in. I'm not saying that Conservation Commission will fight you on this once we know it's the only way in.
Understood. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't feel like we're at that place. I know that the, the development of that lot, especially for a person who wants to live on Block Island, is, is laudable. It's fine. But I think we need proof that you cannot legally get in any other way before a Conservation Commission, whose very mission is to support wetlands, says, fine, build a road through the wetlands.
So thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. So as I said earlier, I'm going to be forwarding through Jen Brady to this board the multiple letters that have gone back and forth to DEM on the legal issue, proving that there's no other legal issue. In addition to that, we're going to be talking to the neighbors just to, because we hear you loud and clear and we want to make sure that you are comfortable and you have all the information you need in order to make your decision. So we will be approaching the neighbors today, if possible, because that's how important this is to us. And we will get back to you as quickly as possible. I know you guys are on a short timeline, so happy to do that. And if there's any other information that we can help provide, we're happy to do so.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So.
I just want, when is your next week?
Very hard to keep up these days.
Our next, our next scheduled meeting is November 18th. And if we have to schedule something before that, we can.
November 18th, yeah.
Right, just.
Her next regularly scheduled meeting is eight.
Sequencing, right? So we know we've got a, I suspect maybe if the town asks, of course, I'd have to get permission from the applicant. If the town could have an extension on that comment period, I think it's legal, so long as you'd want it. But sequencing wise, town comment ends on November 17. As I understand it, Planning and Conservation Commission are going to be providing information to inform the town council. Town council will render a favorable, unfavorable opinion, if you will, to DEM. So just trying to, as an off-islander, once I lived here, by the way, or, or in the, during the summer season. Just trying to figure out that sequencing. I know I've got to come out for the town council, so whatever those days are going to be.
I need to check the council meetings. I, I don't know those ones off the top of my head, unfortunately.
I think November 3rd, I think is the first Monday.
I'm pretty sure it is the 3rd, but it really depends on how quickly we can get the information.
Should I go get somebody that could answer that for us?
I'm almost positive their meeting is the 3rd.
It is the first Monday.
They talked about it in the planning and I was watching that.
So their meeting is November 3rd.
Right. So if there's any information that needs to get to you, I don't know when you're going to have a special meeting or not, but.
Right.
There's two weeks between now and November 3rd.
And I know.
Nora.
I want to give my brother a chance to comment. There may be ways in which to get into that lot 136 that require permission from the neighbors. Our position and argument today is that passing through lot 134, owned by the Blansfield, the applicant, does it require permission? Probably a good courtesy. Probably a good courtesy to have a discussion with the neighbors, but passing solely on 134 doesn't require neighbor permission, legally or otherwise. A- as a matter of courtesy, they should. I agree. But I just want to make sure that we're clear on that specific.
Um, Nora, it's Kevin. I saw you. Sorry.
Nora Clark, also Mansion Road. Um, I just have a clarifying question to you all. Just, I feel like we were discussing all this access through the 135, 134, 133. I was just curious if there was ever any discussion or looking into possibly south of 133, which I know is then bordering on town land. I was just kind of curious. So going completely south of 133 as the kind of into Mansion Beach Road parking lot, and then taking a right underneath 133. And I just think that then you're straight into the Van Der Sliessen's land. So I was just curious if that was ever explored as an option or if it could be.
If I may address Madam Chair, we have explored that option. Um, and we have approached the owners of lot 131, and actually, we were trying to accomplish it through Minister's Lot. And we were trying to get under here and up through here. And unfortunately, the answer was no, and I believe there are certain restrictions on Minister's Lot that actually would prohibit that as well. So in it, for those two reasons, 131, no. Minister's Lot, no. That's why we can't approach from the south.
Just confused briefly, isn't it 131 that also gains access to their land this way?
Yeah, they, they can't, my understanding is that this community limits the ability to use this for anything else. So the, I believe this access doesn't provide um, anything else other than access to Minister's Lot.
Right. I was implying that actually you wouldn't, I, I, again, I don't know, but I would believe you wouldn't be having that Minister's Lot problem because you wouldn't be connecting it to Minister's Lot. You'd be connecting it to the Mansion Beach parking lot. Right. So just knowing that the 131 is also using that, right? The idea that 131 is also using this right-of-way would, again, I don't necessarily know that they need the right-of-way if they can access from Mansion Beach parking lot, which is, it starts here, so the town then would need to be involved as well, but, because that 127 is owned by the town.
But we did try to access it from the south, and we got the answer.
But um, Nora makes a good point in that there is one more avenue of exploration there potentially.
Of course.
Because those roads that belong to the town that go south, south on Mansion Road and through Mansion Beach parking lot up to the top. I mean, before, I don't know which lot it is, but before the house that's at the top of the Mansion Beach parking lot was there, right? With the steep gable. Sheep's Meadow driveway came directly to the Mansion Beach Road. So there's, there's some history of access, not, I'm not suggesting they go that same way, but that, that's closed off in a place in a way that it used to be open. And it sounds like Martha knows more about it.
Yeah, before you go too far down this rabbit hole, the Mansion Road ends where the mansion property begins. The Mansion Road is a separate, was originally a separate 24, 26 feet wide parcels that went all the way out to Corneck that ended where the big lot where the mansion was built. And that's the way it still is. The Mansion Road, it would be like somebody, this has come up before with this particular property. It would be like somebody saying, oh, I don't want to drive all the way up to Payne Road. I want to drive across the school property to my house on the other side because it's town land, therefore I can do it. It doesn't work that way. We've, we've been there before.
Martha?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Martha Ball. I live on, um, I have lived on Mansion Road, um, longer than anybody in this room.
Martha, do you, do you, do you see any, any hiccup of connecting through Mansion Road? Through that, through the parking lot?
Yeah, that's what I just said. The, the parking lot is not public, it's public property, but not, not a public access. The public access ends about where the um, uh, last brick pillar is. That's where the road ends. So that, that's, and that would just be. I don't, I don't have the plat map. I only have the um, this, I, I, and I also do say, I would caution anybody, and I know this is more prop, this is not really under your purview, it's Planning Board, but when people start talking about the 1961 subdivision, everybody should look at that. Zoning didn't even come into place until 67 and subdivision until 72. People plotted out lots.
Thank you, Martha.
Hey, I got the old plat maps. This is map seven. The original subdivision that I told you you should take a look at. It's the 1961 subdivision, forty, of that area.
Here's Mansion there. Okay, here we go. So there's 131. This is Minister's Lot and Sheep's Meadow. This is. Yeah, me too. But would it be a thing that's up to town? Yeah. But it's just another way, another avenue that should be explored in my mind.
All right. Okay. So I, I, I suspect, you know, we don't want to cut anybody off, but um, without, without tenuing to repeat what we're talking about, I think that we're either going to have to say, and it would be a motion, that um, that it, not a, not a permanent one, because remember, the Conservation Commission is advisory and not a decision-making board, that um, that we would need right now to provide a negative advisory but to town council, because we're going back to town council right now as opposed to directly to DEM, only because we feel that we're lacking a full explanation of all of the other options having been fully explored. The biggest one in my mind, and I, and you know, it may not be possible to, to go through town land, as Nora's suggesting, although that does sound clever. But I, the biggest one in my mind is, is still 10 feet through the Blansfield's own property. And I don't, I, I, I still don't feel that I understand completely why that cannot work. And I, you know, it, it deals with the neighbors, it deals with the quality of the neighborhood, but this whole thing deals with the quality of the neighborhood. So it's possible that can't work, but I don't feel comfortable as a commission member saying that the legal right-of-way is the only access to the property when there's owned property that directly connects to it and still allows development. And it's, it's a 10-foot road. It's not a superhighway.
We have to walk it, we have to journey, and it is in the proper lines between. Then you do understand that when you come off the death of our house, you walk under the road. You know, your children will be walking through the road.
Mr. Ben Funtzenberg, can you use the microphone?
Right. We, we would have to show you what that 10-foot looks like. And where the property line divides between 34, 134, and the other two properties. And we'd be happy to do that if that has to be the case. And then the other issue is the town itself, you know, coming through Mansion Beach, uh, coming through that mansion, you know, parking lot area. That's a town issue. That would have to be solved by the town to say they would grant that accessibility. Because they, they only did it once for one of the houses at the end of that parking lot, as you know. That was, that was a long time before the mansion turned into a parking lot for the beach. So we'll be happy to, you know, to try those, and we'll, 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 we'll do a subs, we'll do a substantive drawing showing you the 10-foot on either side of, of 134. We'll get the neighbors in to take a look at that as well, because that's obviously going to be what they're going to look at and say, holy. But you know, you know, let's, let's talk about it, and we'll see what that is. We'll be happy to present that at your next meeting.
Yeah, I, well, I think that that would help put our concern to rest or not. If we're able to see exactly why all of those other options are not.
And the town issue, I, you know, we, we talked about that, but that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a public property. And I, there was an issue knowing that that's not going to be just a easy sell. So we can, I guess if you want to talk to the, to the town about that, that would be something you might want to discuss since it's a town property adjacent to that 131.
So I, I guess, i- in order to avoid the language, because we're not making an advisory directly.
Well, you ask, you have, you have two options.
We only, we still only have our two options.
You still have two options. You, well, you can make a favorable or non-favorable advisory with comments to the council. You can continue until you get the rest of the information you're asking for.
Okay.
To a next meeting, the only thing I can't clarify right now is if we're calling another meeting or if we can get an extension.
Yeah, we're, I know we're in a lot of trouble at meetings right now. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I, I think.
Because both, both councils have offered more information.
Then I might suggest, I might make a motion that we continue until we have the rest of the information to make the Conservation Commission comfortable with the fact that this legal right-of-way is indeed the only reasonable access to the property.
I'd also like to request that any, uh, uh, some sort of list or any correspondence with neighboring property owners is presented as well.
Absolutely. We'll endeavor to get uh, written comments from the neighbors. And I imagine um, they're going to be now participating in these hearings as well. So you might hear from them directly in addition to writing, but that's a great idea. Thank you.
So if we're going to continue, do we need a motion? All right. So I'd like to make a motion to continue the decision for Blansfield Realty Holdings LLC um, until we, until, until the next meeting, until we have further information about access through neighboring properties.
And please, wait, Carlo seconded.
Yep.
I just need a list of, because both lawyers have said you're going to give me information. So can I just have a list for follow-up of what's coming? I believe you said.
So I'm going to provide, um, I believe you've got the plat map right there, so um, I don't know if you need that in addition. Um, I'm going to provide you with the legal opinions that talk about how there's no other legal access here. And those are the legal opinions that were provided to DEM in order for them to vet this as well.
Let me, I respectfully, I don't think we need that.
Okay.
Leave the legal opinion.
Okay, great.
I think what we don't.
It might be useful. Yeah, I'd love to see it. Yeah.
But I think the biggest deal is that we want to see that a, that a good faith effort has been made to consider the access through the Blansfield property or through other neighbors' property as opposed to accessing through the wetlands.
Yep. So with that in mind, uh, given Madam Chair's comments, um, some sort of drawings showing possible alternatives if they can, if they're so feasible. And uh, as you mentioned, uh, possible written correspondence with the neighbors proving that they're in favor or not in favor of this. So that's my list so far. I'm happy to add to it if need be.
I think that would be helpful, and it would help us feel that we are doing our job.
So you can make a copy of that yourself, but I have a digitized copy of my phone. I'm going to send it to Jen.
That would be great.
It's map seven. Um, I'll provide whatever information which we've provided, at least certainly to the department, and I believe as well as to my brother, our, our position vis-à-vis legal recorded rights of way. And then um, I guess to the extent that we would show any other supplemental, like passageways through 134, I suppose we can give you a mock-up of that as, 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 as something you can work with and look at. Have that, have the help. I would think and hope that we're, as an expectation, that they're going to provide that, right?
Yeah, we are. The engineers are going to do that.
Um, Amanda, would we be able to, can you walk us through what would be involved in, if we were to look at um, the suggestion Ms. Clark had made about access through the Mansion Beach parking area? Like, who would be involved in that? Who would do the?
Uh, my understanding is that would probably have to go through the owner and speak with either, I'm assuming you would probably start with the town manager. I don't know the process for that.
Can you find that out for us? Because it, it seemed like Ms. Clark's um, suggestion involved town land.
It does, and I.
So that's the what I'd like.
It would probably need to go to the manager and then to the council uh, that, and with their legal representation as well. But I'll follow up on that and let everybody know.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'm happy to sit down. I, I just want to thank you again for all your time and attention to this matter. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, very, very much.
Okay. All right. I believe that takes us to item number five, which hopefully will be shorter because I'm going to get swatted over the head with a turvy about not getting to the roll call dinner. To wrangle the students. Um, but at any rate, we'll get there. So, um, so item number five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to probably do some research afterwards. Yeah, I'll, I'll, but yeah.
If you don't mind waiting one second, just while everybody exits. I appreciate it.
Amanda, this is the, this is the cursed scan, right? The Costello that kept, because I think, like, these are all the identical. Uh, all five pages are identical.
Yeah. Uh, it's the drainage system.
Can we do this next item or are we good? Yeah, we're going to do the next item. All right. So we, are, are we okay? Are we moving on? Okay. All right. So item number five is Costello, Mark, plat four, lot nine. Advisory to the zoning official for Coastal Resource Management Council sign-off for an application for proposed drainage system to direct storm runoff.
Oh, and this one's the same, too.
Good afternoon. Mark Castellanos, Trendon Associates. Yes, I too like to keep this short. I just brought this out for, for Sergio. I'll um, and do my best to explain it, but what the Costellas are looking to do is they have a low-point depression in this area, a yard. And what they're looking to do is collect that water with the curtain drain and then, uh, you know, have it drain out to the, to, to the wetland and to the Z series, I believe.
Right.
Honestly, don't know much more than that, but I do have a wetlands project narrative. I'm happy to read experts from or provide to you. I, I don't know what was provided.
No.
No?
No.
Project narrative? Okay.
It was, it was sent on Friday, the 17th by, uh, yeah, I, I have it for you.
Yeah, I saw it.
Katie, it's not the same one as the one we just looked at, because that's also called a, right, Wetlands Project Manager.
I have.
Marcus is it?
Yes. Yeah. It's Marcus Stoff. We have it.
Yeah, it is. It is. So my, um, the one question I had about this project is there, I, I know where the house is. I know where the wetland is. That's along the um, east side of Cornet Road there. That's right at the edge of where this, you know, right through there. So is there, is there a culvert under the road there already that helps provide drainage so that you know, it, I, to me, it doesn't sound like a huge problem to re, because they're, you're talking about reorienting stormwater from the low-lying section of the yard to get it over and to actually allow the stormwater to enter the wetland. And there are two, just one second. The, the two, the two, on the, on the positive side of that, the wetland is already there, the storm. The stormwater is likely already running or dripping into that same wetland. It just makes it take longer because of the low-lying level in the yard. But there is an advisory in, on the EPA website on stormwater best practice management, which indicates that we should be careful about diverting stormwater into a natural wetland as opposed to into a constructed wetland. And you're diverting into a natural wetland, that wetland is already there. So I think my only concern would be in a heavy, with heavy amounts of stormwater, will there be an increase in drainage enough to alter that freshwater wetland? Or is there a culvert under the road in that area, which I think there may be, that will allow that wetland to drain quickly enough with excess stormwater in it that we're not changing the nature of the wetland by, do you see what I mean? It's going to, with this drainage system, your, the Costello's property is going to drain faster into that wetland than it does now. It already does drain into that wetland.
Correct, right.
But it will drain faster.
Correct.
If there's a culvert, it probably won't be that much faster because there's a good drainage system under the road.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does.
And I think you're absolutely correct, so the design here is it's going to feed into this small Z wetland and then looking at the grade here, it's draining back to this head wall where there is a 12-inch pipe that then
Okay.
conveys it across the street into the.
Yes, right. So, do other people have questions about that?
I do.
Go ahead, Amy.
Hang on, it goes under the road, goes under the road.
Left here.
Where does it end up?
And then it's going to travel this way, north of Lake, to a culvert here where there's a head wall, invert 6.5, travel a little bit here to the low end into this coastal feature.
Coastal feature.
There's the big wetland. We went birdwatching there once.
I know that that body of land, the wetlands, after one rain, it fills up, almost floods the road.
It does, comes close, yeah.
Really.
Yeah. Here?
No, by Cornet Road.
On the Cornet roadside, yeah.
So, because that was my question, if it's going to fill much faster than it used to because of the new drainage system, you may actually potentially have a flooding issue on Cornet Road from dumping stormwater into that freshwater wetland faster than it has happened in the past. It's the same water, but the low spot on the Costello's land allows it to filter more slowly into that wetland.
All right, so I.
So that might be a question that needs to be answered.
Right, that would definitely, I mean, I don't want to speak to Sergio outside, I did to design it, but normal practice would be that they would analyze the amount of stormwater that has been drained into this area and determining if that 12-inch pipe was sufficient to then handle that increase and over, but I would have to confirm that with Sergio.
And that would have to be cleaned regularly, wouldn't it? Does it have a?
I don't know, we're not proposing any change other than to
I mean, doesn't it get fun?
Uh, here, it would, but then it but it would just go back to its natural, the way it is now, you know, with the saturation of this area.
It might be a silly question, but if they're, if they're bothered by the low spot in the yard, right, because the low spot in the yard fills up, I've seen it wet in that yard. Why not fill the low spot as opposed to drain it into the, you know what I mean? Why not change the drainage of the whole property by filling the low spot? I don't think it's a wetland, I think it's just a dip in their property.
What they planted there are wetland.
Are they?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
They've got.
In the DEM, so they're probably placing fill within that jurisdiction, you're going to.
All right, so it might not be realistic, but I guess I, I just think if Terenzia, it's Terenzia, right? Can let us know whether there's potential, because I agree with Amy that I, in heavy rain or heavy wet seasons, that wetland on the side of Cornet Road on both sides comes very close to the grade of the road already.
All right.
So it would be nice to have some
Knowledge that that has been.
Information about whether draining the Costello property faster into that wetland is going to make that situation worse, right?
And I'd have a question about, are they employing fertilizers on that lawn? Because if they are, then we definitely don't want that draining across the street to the wetlands that are there.
Yeah, that's a very good question, an important one, is how, is what's the landscape management program? And are there any fertilizers involved or other chemicals?
And I would guess the answer could be yes, but let's say they say, no, we're not, you know, what guarantees do we have that some other landscaper arrives and they don't apply fertilizer?
It doesn't look like a fertilized lawn, but that.
But it would be good to put something in, it would be good to put something in that if we were to arrive at a place where we approve this, some kind of restriction on fertilizer use, you know?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, so that would be something you suggest to DEM that that be included.
That if the approval is given, it be with the caveat that.
This one is, this is just an advisory to the zoning official, guys.
What?
This one's an advisory to the zoning official.
This one's advisory to zoning also, okay, so.
It's not that you can't put that in there, but that, just so you're aware, this is not a DEM or CRM statement. This is a, you're going to the zoning official.
So I guess our advisory to zoning might, I'm sorry, again, be that.
They can come back if you want more information.
Because we need the, we need information on whether the drainage into that wetland will be, a potential impact of the drainage into that wetland being much faster than it used to be. We're recognizing that the Costello property already drains to that wetland, but the low spot makes it drain much more slowly. And this culvert drain will make it drain fast. And that might make a difference on the side of that road. I have seen that wetland creeping right up over the edge of Cornet Road with no culvert drain there, with no, the drainage that Costello is suggesting.
Is that all wetland up top? What is the crisscross?
Yeah, sure, it's a wetland.
Yeah, it's really wet up there, so, I mean, if you drain it down from there, you may have yourself a raging little river in that drain.
Yeah.
Right? And maybe not, but maybe, maybe they could speak to the potential for the raging river.
Or will our trees? They have a lot of nice plants in there.
They're going to drown those glossy ivas. That's the spot they like.
Okay, so are you asking for more information?
Yes.
That's fine. We're going to continue into the November 18th meeting because, no offense to you, we've had a lot of special meetings.
Yep.
And.
Oh, no, please, yeah.
I think we can make that one.
Does it make sense, what, the extra information that we would like?
Yeah, so the area here that we're proposing to drain to is already has considerable flood issues. That this would then now increase that by draining water quicker.
Right, we want to know the, we want to know the potential impact for increasing the flooding in that wetland that this drain might have.
And, you know, and I guess an issue we need to be thinking about is if it has persistent flooding, if you will, is that not a vernal area? And therefore, important habitat.
Okay.
Because there's a discussion of that at the end of that summary that Katie reminded us about.
Make a motion?
Okay, so.
Was that west, west? This potentially, if this is considered some type of vernal?
Yeah, especially the area at the bottom.
That's bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But let alone the other side, if it's like pretty much stays wet over extended periods of time in the spring, that may be important amphibian habitat and what have you.
Okay.
I know there used to be a muskrat that used to live on the other side of the wall. I haven't seen the muskrat in a while, but.
That's the very first place on Block Island that I ever saw glossy ivas.
No way.
Maybe four or five years ago, and because in the spring, when there's standing water there, is where those birds show up first. So it is an important little wetland, and I think we need to make sure that the, that increasing the drainage into it doesn't destroy the natural wetland or significantly alter the natural wetland.
And is it designated wetland?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it is.
They have it designated on there, saying it's a wetland. I mean, but remember, the property's already draining into that wetland. There's natural drainage into the wetlands. They're just looking at changing the natural drainage so that it comes in more efficiently. But more efficiently can also be with more power, and more power can be breaking down that wetland as it is.
Not to mention what you pointed out, Madam Chair, which is the natural filtration that occurs.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we need a motion, Amanda, right?
Yes.
So I'm going to make a motion to continue the discussion of the Costello advisory for zoning until the November 18th meeting in order to obtain more information.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much for your help today. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll be happy to. I would like.
Thank you, sir.
So that the roll call ladies don't kill me.
I can second that.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Thank you.
Aye.